Okay, we'll call to order the committee of the whole meeting for Tuesday, May 10th. First item on our agenda tonight is roll call.
Miller?
Here.
Rosado?
Here.
Beck?
Here.
Connolly?
Here.
Chantet?
Here.
Soffa?
Here.
Wolf?
Here.
Barron?
Here.
Lehman? Ayazi?
Here.
Malay? Yor?
Here.
Serone?
Here.
Vogelsinger?
Here. Here.
Thank you. We have 12 out of 14 tonight.
Okay. And then item number two will be a reminder to please speak directly into the microphone for the recording and broadcast tonight. Item number three is approval of the minutes from April 12th, 2022. Corrections or changes on them? Not? Can I get a motion?
So moved.
Second?
A motion by Soffa, second by Beck. Roll call, please.
Soffa?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Yor?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller? Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Motion carried. 12 to 12.
Okay, thank you. All right, up next is item to be removed, editor change. Do we have anything tonight?
No, we do not.
Okay. Then we'll move on to matters from the public for anything not on the agenda tonight. Is there anybody online?
No.
All right, seeing none, then we will move right into item number six. And first thing is Alderman Beck will leave the proceedings for this. Item six is an approval of a Class C-1 carry-in restaurant liquor license application for Happy Tummies LLC doing business as Thai Village located at 4 North Batavia Avenue. And they win for the best LLC name.
Yes, the Batavia Police Department conducted an investigation and background check to determine whether the corporation Happy Tummies LLC, DBA Thai Village located at 4 North Batavia Avenue, and a corporate officer, and I'm not even going to try to pronounce the name, might be suitable to receive a liquor license in the city of Batavia. Everything checked out and there have, no problems have been found. Any discussion?
Hope this, for anybody watching this, is just a change of ownership for the, they, currently the business has the same liquor license, the current owners.
Yes.
Correct. Does anybody here from Thai Village tonight, online? Okay, then I would make a motion to move to City Council, Class C-1 carry-in restaurant liquor license application for Happy Tummies LLC, DBA Thai Village located at 4 North Batavia Avenue.
Second.
Is that Soffa or Serone?
Soffa. Motion by Rosado, second by Soffa. Roll call, please.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck? Connolly?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Soffa?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Yor?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Motion carried. 11 to 12.
11 is 11-0.
11, oh, 11-0. Sorry about that.
Okay, and then the record reflected Alderman Beck has returned for item seven. And item seven is ordinance 22-24, conditional use permit for a drive-through for Mocha Coffee at 132 Independence Drive, Miller Coff, or Miller Coffee Property LLC applicant. And Drew, do you have this tonight?
Uh, yes, I do.
Go ahead.
Make sure I'm muted. Okay. Uh, yes, uh, tonight's ordinance is a conditional use permit, uh, which is required for a drive-through in the community commercial district. The Miller Coffee property is the applicant for this property at 132 Independence Drive. This property has basically been vacant since it was planted in 1994. Miller Coffee would be building a 1,200 square foot restaurant on the 1.6 acre property. It would have a drive-through along the west side of the building, uh, as well as a walk-up window for customers to, uh, basically, uh, walk to the site and, uh, and use the business. Uh, all the ordering would be done, uh, at the window, although at the plan commission meeting, uh, the applicant did note that they would also, during high-traffic periods, uh, take orders from customers, uh, directly with, uh, uh, computer consoles. Uh, so, uh, there is no loudspeakers being used on this location. Uh, all orders would be basically received directly from applicant, or from property, or from, uh, customers. There is sufficient queuing under our code requirements. Uh, there's a bypass lane. Uh, they provided, uh, sufficient parking under our code requirements. At the public hearing, um, uh, Mr. and Mrs. Miller did explain that this is, would be their second location in Illinois. Their other location was in North Aurora, is in North Aurora, and, uh, they noted to the commission that, uh, a lot of their experiences at that location have helped prepare this particular application. So the, uh, the applicant, uh, did, uh, have conversation with the plan commission about a number of items, including, uh, you know, how pedestrians would access the site, uh, the, the parking situation, uh, and the general, uh, thought of how the, the site was laid up. And, uh, they did, uh, recommend approval of the conditional use permit to the, uh, city council, and they did approve design review contingent on approval of, uh, this conditional use permit. So that is what is before you tonight with ordinance 22-24.
Okay, does anybody have any questions, any comments on it? I think it's an interesting layout for how they have it set up, but I do like the fact that it does not have an entrance closer to the southern end off of Main Street, so it wouldn't queue up and end up getting to Main Street if it ever gets extremely busy. That'll be either on the property or closer to the entrance at the north side of the property. Anybody online have any comments? Okay, not, I will make the motion that we recommend to council ordinance 22-24, uh, for a conditional use permit for a drive-through restaurant, uh, Mocha Coffee, 132 Independence Drive, Miller Coffee Property LLC applicant. Second. Okay, motion by Wolf, second by Miller. Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Yor?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Soffa?
Aye.
And motion carried, 12 to 0.
Okay, thank you. Up next is item eight, ordinance 22-25, uh, amending z, zoning code, city code Title 10, Chapter 4.4 regarding electronic changeable message signs, Aurora Sign Company applicant. Joel, do you have that?
Uh, Joel is out tonight, so I'll, I'll be covering this one.
Okay.
Um, so this is a, with, a new ordinance, 22-25, uh, previously, uh, you, uh, the council did review ordinance 22-18 with discussion of this, uh, but with the additional consideration for the electronic changeable message sign changes, uh, this was separated out from the rest of that particular ordinance. Uh, at your last, uh, meeting that you reviewed this, which, which was March 29th, uh, the committee did discuss, uh, essentially where, uh, your preferences were for having electronic changeable message signs, uh, in, in consideration for these changes, uh, and we've drafted the update for this ordinance, uh, to take that into account, uh, particularly that those changes include, um, the limitation that, uh, the change for ECMs in the LI and GI District would only be applicable to properties, uh, north of Wilson Street and east of Washington Avenue, uh, and they would need to be at least 200 feet from a residential property. Uh, so those changes have been included in this ordinance, uh, 1040 tonight, uh, and that essentially limits, uh, for the LI and GI District, which the ordinance proposes the expansion for electronic changeable message signs for, uh, to be basically in the northeast industrial park, uh, away from, uh, residential properties by at least 200 feet. Uh, so that is, uh, the, uh, what is, would propose with ordinance 22-25, and we recommend approval as presented.
Okay. Mark, do you have any comments?
Still don't want them, that's it. Really, I just don't want them. I, I noticed the one, I don't want them anywhere. Um, I noticed ironically, I was distracted by the fact that there's one in front of Douglas Carpet, and I was at the corner and I happened to look and I see it out of the corner of my eye, and unfortunately I was at a stoplight, but again, it's proven that they're distracting to drivers and the, that's, we need less distraction for drivers rather than more, so I just don't approve of them anywhere.
Anybody else have any comments? I was going to point out that I thought that that one was pretty minimally invasive into your life when you're going down Randall Road. It's not super bright or super obnoxious, but that's my, my view on it. Okay. Anybody else has any comments? I will make the motion that, uh, we recommend to council 22, uh, ordinance 22-25, amending the zoning code, city code Title 10, Chapter 4.4 regarding electronic changeable message signs. Second. Motion by Wolf, second by Soffa. Roll call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Barron?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Yor?
No.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
No.
Connolly?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Soffa?
Aye.
Motion carried, 10 to 2.
All right, thank you. Yep, next is item number nine, uh, ordinance 22-26, amending the zoning code, city code Title 10, chapters 2.1, 2.6, 4.1, 4.2, 4.4, and 6, uh, city of Batavia applicant.
Okay, uh, with, with these, uh, or with this ordinance, 22-26, uh, this is basically a series of, uh, items that staff identified, um, as, uh, needing, uh, consideration for revision or consideration, uh, for amendment, uh, so that's what we brought to the plan commission, uh, on March 16th and April 20th, uh, and essentially the changes are, uh, the following. And, uh, Alderman Wolf, if you want to stop me at different points for questions, please let me know. But, uh, the first item is towing establishments. What is proposed is that, uh, this use would be made a conditional use in the LI and GI Districts. Right now it's a permitted use, uh, as we identified in the memo, you know, there are certain conflicts that are created with that use, uh, particularly with residential, so we feared, uh, it would be appropriate to, uh, review those type of uses under a conditional use permit. In terms of outdoor, uh, storage and incidental display, uh, the first aspect of the change, uh, is that currently in the LI and GI Districts, um, when they're abutting a, uh, another industrial use, you're not required to have a solid fence, but are, what's proposed is that, uh, a solid fence would be required on all four sides, uh, of a LI or GI zone property when outdoor storage is small. Uh, the other aspect in this section is, uh, the council requested that we did make some changes to allow for basically, if we're calling incidental outdoor display, uh, so that would be a small display area of products that industrial property may have, uh, on a property, or that they may sell to, uh, customers, uh, so basically it would be a small, what would be allowed would be a small 200 square foot area, uh, to display products or merchandise outside of a, uh, basically a storage area. There would be certain, uh, requirements to make sure that, um, access and pedestrian movement is, uh, not imp, uh, impeded at all. The other item, or next item is, uh, the site distance triangle, uh, and some changes regarding easements. Essentially, this would add into our site, uh, requirements, a site distance triangle so that if there's landscaping at a corner, uh, that it's limited in height and doesn't impact vision, uh, for drivers or pedestrians, uh, in that area. It's something we review with, uh, design review projects, but we don't have it codified, so we, we do want to put in the zoning code. Uh, another item is, uh, the basically, uh, we wanted to modify the language about, uh, what's allowed in an easement to make explicit that a, uh, public, a public utility structure is allowed, even though we don't allow, structures generally ease in areas, but that a public utility structure is allowed in those areas. The, um, next change is regarding, uh, convenience retail. Essentially, this is for gas stations, um, that have a convenience store component. We have a higher parking requirement for those, and we did feel that, um, just because there's usually in those situations, parking at the gas pumps, that it doesn't seem necessary to have that additional parking requirement beyond what a general retail use would require. Uh, the items regarding menu signage, uh, essentially, uh, we use some language that was specific to restaurants for drive-through messaging or menu boards, uh, so we just wanted to make clear that, uh, other drive-through types could have some type of signage and that it falls under that same signage allowance. Uh, with temporary signage, this is really a cleanup item also. Uh, essentially, it's just clarifying that this section, uh, of the code for temporary signs, uh, is specific to the DME District as well. It's how we've applied it, it's just cleaning that up. Uh, and then lastly, rooming houses. We've had inquiries over the, over time regarding how we regulate rooming houses. Essentially, this is, uh, one house situation with multiple leases within the house, uh, and so since the code was silent on it, we do want to have, uh, regulation in place, uh, so that we can better react to these types of situations, uh, and, uh, that neighbors are, are aware of, of how the house is being used. So essentially, this would, uh, allow that use in the R1H District, which is our more denser district. It would require an administrative use approval, which is similar to what we require, uh, for Airbnbs, uh, or bed breakfasts, uh, so it's that same type of notice that neighbors, uh, within basically one property plus one, uh, receive a notice when somebody is looking to establish this use. And it would require, uh, parking for each, uh, leasing, and, uh, essentially, uh, like I said, would give us some, some oversight of this, uh, use. Uh, so again, the plan commission did recommend approval, and we recommend approval, uh, as staff of the ordinance before you say.
Okay, does anybody have any questions? The only one that I have a question about probably isn't totally what we're changing or doing with it, but the towing establishment one, I don't know how many people are aware of the publicity that's been happening lately about certain towing company that has unbelievable rates, and I, I don't know if there's any way we can regulate that, or...
We are, um, investigating that matter with the, um, city attorney, and we can get back to you on measures that are within our authority, but, um, we have been advised to keep our expectations low, as even the Illinois Commerce Commission seems to lack the authority to rein in the ability of towing companies to charge whatever.
Because I know that that was one of the things I thought we used to do in our towing contracts that we had for the police department, you know, if they request tow is that they had to agree to pricing that we had, and I don't remember that in the last couple of times I've seen, we've listed out our, you know, number one, two, and three towing contractors that the city uses. I don't think they've listed their rates in there.
I can check on that. I thought that the rates were listed, but these that you're hearing about in the news are the, uh, customers contacting the towing company independently.
Right.
They're not being, um, contracted through the city's agreement.
Okay.
And just to clarify, this would not be retroactive to existing establishments, so those who've ended up being legal non-conforming, so this would not affect that establishment either at this time.
Okay. Anybody else have any questions? Abby?
I have a question on the rooming houses. What is the, what is the problem we're trying to solve with that one?
Well, I'll jump in on that one. So Joel, Joel's out, he, he did a lot of the drafting of this, but, um, you know, essentially we, we had complaints, uh, from neighbors, uh, about at least one rooming house in the, in the community. Uh, they were complaining about, you know, noise and the trans latency of people coming in and out and not knowing who was living there, that type of thing. Um, so there, there were some concerns from neighbors about that, not just one, it was several neighbors. So, uh, we looked at it and we just don't really address them in our zoning code. It's not that it would, uh, necessarily address all of those issues, but it, it is a use that we do not specifically address, uh, anywhere in the code right now.
But don't we have codes for noise already that we can enforce?
We do, and there's nuisance codes, but, you know, in some cases, you know, residents would have to file a nuisance lawsuit against somebody for certain things. You know, police can also go in and enforce certain codes, but, um, so there's, it's not just noise, it's just the, you know, the trans latency, I think, that people have been concerned about also.
But are there specific problems with the trans latency that we've encountered?
Well, the neighbors feels that it was. I mean, that's, that's, you know, part of the reaction of this.
Yeah, part of this is just kind of rubbing me wrong. I guess I was looking back, every, every living situation I've had since moving out of my parents' house to getting married has been, would fall under this category of a rooming house. I had roommates all throughout college, I had roommates as a young professional, um, so it was like, oh, oh, we are undesirables. It seems very like we are trying to outlaw a certain group of people from living in only certain neighborhoods, that if this is an allowable, uh, uh, housing style, um, which I think is a very common one in many places and, and ways that people, you know, fresh out of college or in college can afford to live on their own. Either it's an acceptable living style for the city, or it's not, um, so I kind of take issue with designating it to only certain places to, um, ensure neighborhood character elsewhere. It's just, there are just pieces of it that are, that are rubbing me the wrong way.
I agree with you, Abby, on that. Um, you know, again, we're trying to find affordable housing for every buddy in the community, um, and a lot of times, if you have somebody in that type of situation, they have the money and the means to be able to, you know, service our, our businesses in the downtown area, um, and so that's some of the reasons why they do it. They're also workers within, um, some of the establishments.
Yeah, I guess I would argue that, you know, the, the change is, is actually allowing these, it's not necessarily saying you can't do them. Um, you know, really technically, you can't do them under, under our code because it's not an allowable use anywhere. So I think we're, we're actually broadening what's allowed.
And I mean, yeah, requiring, uh, an administrative use permit, you know, I guess because we want to be aware of where they are, I, if it's an allowable use, I say we just make an allowable use everywhere. I take issue with the not allowing it everywhere.
I think, if I could, I think this addresses individual leases for people, so I mean, like having seven leases for seven individuals in a house, and I mean, the example you gave, I did that when I got out of school too, but my roommate and we signed a lease that was applicable to all of us, where if one person violated the lease, the, everybody's out. So this is more applicable, I think, to where you're having seven individuals with seven individual leases, is what it seems.
That's correct.
In my reading of it.
Right.
I know, I had no problem with that. I feel like it's like one lease, like I remember when I signed the lease, it was my own individual lease with my house and I had different roommates.
No, it's, this is really the situation that we're talking about as, as individuals.
I know, and that's how it was. Yeah, that's what I had.
Okay.
Yeah.
I guess the one thing that I'll see is, is, I think it's, one, good to allow them, but it's also good to regulate it so that if we know somebody's going to have seven leases on one property, they better have seven parking spaces available so that we don't end up with people parking in their, your front yard or on the side streets and moving cars around every day just to be able to park at night.
We have that with individual houses anyways.
Right now.
We can already enforce that. Yeah. With what we have on the books. Yeah.
Yeah, I agree. It should be allowed everywhere? Well, I, I just don't understand the restriction. I don't understand the need for restriction to say that that can happen here, but not there. It's, I don't...
I think it could get us in trouble. And I mean, I will say, like, if there's, if there's stronger codes that we need to enforce that are landlords, um, because I know we've got some troublesome spots in town, um, I think we should find ways to address bad landlords. I don't think going after the type of tenant is the way.
Because I look at more as we're going after the landlords than we're going after the, the tenants. You know, I mean, I want to...
It's the, it's the use itself, I think, is what's, what's here. I mean, we're not, you know, I wouldn't see us going after individual tenants for, for the, for anything that's a violation. It would be, uh, a land use issue against the, the property owner, essentially is what would happen. And I guess I, I look at this as that we're broadening what's, what the use is allowed, you know, with, with this change that's being proposed, so, you know, I, I, I don't know that I would agree that, you know, we're making things more restrictive. I think it's, it's providing some level of understanding and control, I guess, but it also is broadening the land uses that are allowed. I mean, if somebody came and wanted to do a rooming house today, we'd probably need to tell them no, because it's technically not in our zoning code anywhere.
Do, do these owners come to you today, or do they just do it?
They just do it, usually.
So tomorrow, if this went through, what would change for those?
So then they would need to come and get the administrative use permit, and again, the administrative use permit is more of a, a ministerial permit where it's done by staff. Um, it's, that doesn't go to the plan commission, it doesn't go to council, um, so it's just a, you know, it's essentially a, a permit that's issued by, by the city. Um, there's a notification requirement, just like certain other types of uses are, uh, covered under an administrative use permit, um, bed breakfast is, is a good example of that, um, so that there is a, a process that's involved, but, uh, it's a very minimal, uh, not a very, um, invasive process, I guess you would say.
So what if somebody doesn't come and get one and we find that they do, I mean, is there a penalty for them for doing that without getting the administrative use permit?
Yeah, I mean, we, any, like any other kind of zoning violation, I mean, we would, you know, contact them with a, you know, a letter and or a, a personal visit and, you know, explain, you know, what, what needs to be done, and then if we have to, we, we, you know, put them into the, uh, adjudicative, uh, purse process or the court process, depending on, you know, what the circumstances are. So I mean, there's, you know, a potential penalty for it. I mean, obviously, our, our goal when any type of zoning issue is to get compliance rather than fines. So that, that, you know, we would start down that road if we have to, but hopefully we wouldn't need to do that.
Does anybody online have any comments? I don't see any hands up.
So I would be in support of passing it as long as we just remove the, uh, the R1H single-family high density district restriction.
Scott, was there a reason why that one was added in? Was that added in at plan commission, or was that from staff?
That was from the original drafting, and I think the idea behind that was that it was, uh, meant to be more towards our higher density districts because, you know, a lot of these rooming houses do involve six, seven, eight people sometimes, depending on what they are, so there's more of a, you know, and, a level of intensity with, with, uh, rooming houses oftentimes. Uh, and most of the time, what you see in most zoning codes is you do see them in your higher density zoning districts.
And the other, uh, aspect that was mentioned in the memo is, uh, that basically R1H is closer to downtown, closer to services, so, uh, if there are people that don't have vehicles, that'd be closer to, uh, walking distance for that, those type of things.
We haven't had any requests for any that are outside of the R1H District that I'm aware of, and I'm not aware that we actually have any other ones other than the R1H District. So, I mean, if we implement this, we can, you know, see how it goes and then revisit it in the future if we wish to do that.
I guess that would be my suggestion, that we come back and look at this in a year and see, one, how many people come in and actually apply for this, and two, how many do we know of that are out there after that year? See whether or not this is working, or whether or not this is...
I guess my argument would be why, why restrict it? Because if somebody in one of the other zoning areas decides they want to do it, now they need to go to plan commission and everything, because now they want a variance, because they want to do this. We're, and that's just creating, that's creating a problem. I mean, right now, it's, it's only a problem because we don't have, we haven't codified it, so it's codified. it, so let's codify it and just allow it wherever. I mean, we'll know, either they're going to apply or they're not. So if they don't apply, then there's the, we say, hey, you have to apply. And then they're like, oh, sorry, didn't know it. And then it wouldn't matter where they live. So I, I just don't understand why we would put a restriction on it.
Sure brings up a good point. A lot of these are close to the downtown area where people walk, and a lot of these people may not have a car. So, you know, for us to say that they also have to have a car for somebody that may not have it, um, you know, if you're going to have a rooming with seven and expect seven spots, but let's say none of them have a car.
Yeah. Yeah, I agree. I would kind of take out the parking permit requirement too, because again, they can't park on the sidewalk, they can't park on the street, can't park on their lawn. We have codes too, we have, we have ways of enforcing that problem.
Then what would be the solution if there are seven cars, then?
Then they have to find alternative parking. What do they do now?
Well, they would have to move, because if they've got the car, or they'd have to sell the car.
What does a family do today that has seven cars?
We had an issue like that off of Prairie, where they were parked around the corner.
But we already addressed that.
Right. Yeah. There, people are already making exceptions for those things anyway. And we have, like Abby said, we have rules and ordinances that already govern that and checks for those.
Well, if that would be okay, by saying the, the dedicated number of spots, we are trying to prevent the situation where a property owner leases to someone when they don't have the space. And, um, you know, if, if they know that that's a requirement upfront, they'll provide that, but in this case, somebody would have thought they had a room in a house that they had signed a lease for, and now they're going to have to make that decision of, you know, they're going to have to live someplace else and/or sell their car.
Yeah, I think one of the other issues to think about is that, remember, these, this is a rooming house, the rooming houses have, you know, a number of individual leases, and those people may not know each other or may not have any relationship to each other before they sign, before they moved into this house. So they're also going to have to somehow get along and decide who's going to park where, when, and how. So if you have like a, let's say you had a standard, you know, two-car driveway, you may have four parking spaces, and if you have four people or five people, you know, who's the, who's the one that's going to, and they all have cars, who's the one that's going to be the one that's left out? So, you know, that, that, that becomes a potential problem, um, that the landlord's going to be like, you know what, you guys are going to have to work it out amongst yourselves, and you're going to get some infighting with, with that type of situation. So it's a little bit different, um, you know, with this kind of a use, in my opinion.
Relevant to this, there is a public comment from Dustin Piper, is a given parking spot per dwelling unit strictly necessary, given the smaller lot sizes of R1H buildings, it could be a significant limiting effect, especially in an area where car ownership is ideally less necessary, the reservation of a spot could be part of a lease, for instance.
Yeah, and I think if we leave the R1H designation on it, then I'm okay with taking the parking part of it out. But if we allow it anywhere, then I think you got to leave some of the parking in there.
Why can't it just be either, to that point, A, you're going to rent the spot too? A, you want, you want a room, it's 500 bucks a month. You want a room and a spot, it's 550. And then they have, if you write it in a way that they have to have the appropriate number of spots, again, we've, we're taking away parking restrictions as it is, and now we're, let's throw one in there. And we're trying to limit parking restrictions to allow more flexibility, and if it's obviously on the homeowner to figure it out, and if they say, hey, I've got all my spots, all the parking spots I have available are full, if you don't have a car, you're welcome to have a room, but if you have a car, I can't help you out, or you're going to have to find another place to park your car. So I just, I don't.
Yeah, from, from a standpoint of enforcement, though, that, that gets to be more complicated, because now we're going to be, you know, going in there and, and, you know, making some determinations on, you know, who can have what type of a lease on these, and we, I don't think we want to get to that level of detail. Simpler way to have it was to have the one parking space per, per, you know, space or lease that was in, in the, in the contract. So I do understand, though, that, you know, with the R1H district, I think, you know, there's, there's probably some good argument to say, you know what, we do allow for overnight parking spaces and things like that, and maybe in the R1H district, that would make sense to not require that specifically in, in that particular district.
So in, in the case of the, um, the code, we would have the onus be on the landlord, and if we take that out, then the person that we're ticketing is their, their tenants, time after time when they're parking in the street, and they said, my landlord told me that, you know, that, that was okay. So we can take it out, but just realize that it's probably going to be the tenant who is going to be, bear the burden when the parking is illegal.
But they also have to know that when they live in the community, what some of the regulations are. They have to take responsibility of, I can't park on the street after 1:00 until 6:00 in the morning. It's, you know, it's just one of those things, like, I'll just use a Airbnb, you know, we were told where to park. This is where you park because this is what you're renting. And so it's not uncommon for that to happen, for landlords to say, I only have X number of spots, and as Mark said, you know, it's up to the landlord to decide if they're going to sell a spot with a rental, with a car or not.
Yeah, I would throw in there too, I've got a very large driveway, so if one of my neighbors is like, hey, I'm going to be renting out a bunch of houses, can, or a bunch of rooms, can I use spots in your, in your driveway? I'd be like, sure, 50 bucks a month or whatever, I would.
And this is where you park.
Yeah, this is, you know, I'll draw a line, chalk line there, that's where you park, and it's, it's plausible that people could come up with their own scenarios on a way to solve the problem, just like families do right now. I'm sure there's families that talk to their friends and say, hey, I need, can I park at the end of your driveway?
I see concern in that instance of seven leases needing seven spots, and they ain't there. But again, it goes back to Abby's first question, is there a problem that we're solving? We're, we're doing a lot of hypothetical things. If we're going to revisit this in a year and see how many people are doing it, we can go back and forth for hours on end. I would propose that we take the R1 zone out and, and make it everywhere, and take the parking out for now, and revisit it in a year.
Has the parking been a problem, Scott? Has that been one of the issues on a regular basis with this, or is it more just the amount of people and not knowing?
Um, I think it's, I think it's probably a combination of both, but I think they've mostly been able to park them on the site itself. I think it's just one of the concerns that one of the neighbors had, with just the number of vehicles also.
We should build more walkable places so that neighbors don't have to be annoyed by their neighbors having too many cars. Like, I mean, we can't.
My neighbor has three cars.
You walked into that one, Scott.
Well, I know.
To have fewer cars. It usually hasn't carried much weight with those families that have six cars.
So I guess then we have to decide, are we going to pull the, the designation out, the R1, was it R1H out? And are we going to pull parking restriction out of it? I'd say we pull them both, and then see how it goes after a year.
Yeah, if there's problems, then we can address the problems, but.
Can't get the code enforcement officer to do anything but that, then we got to do something different. Okay. Did you get that, Scott, so we can?
Yeah.
Pull those two out of there?
Yep.
Okay.
Yep, we'll, we'll make those two changes before we get to council.
Pull those out of there, and then I'll make the, the motion here in a second. Sarah, did you want to comment?
Yeah, I just wanted to express my support for this with those sections removed and revisiting this in a year and hearing any updates that happen along the way.
All right, so I'll make the motion that we recommend a Council ordinance 22-26, amending city, the zoning code, city code Title 10, chapters 2.1, 2.6, 4.1, 4.2, 4.4, and 6, City of Batavia applicant. And in the section 2.106, the N of rooming houses, we would remove the R1H zoning to allow it in any zoning district in the city, and then also the parking restrictions. I get a second? Okay. Motion by Wolf, second by Baron. Call, please.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Yor?
Aye.
Seron?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connelly?
Aye.
Chanzet?
Aye.
Soffa?
Aye.
Motion carried, 12 to 0.
All right, thank you. Up next is item 10, Resolution 22-56-R, adding a second deputy chief position to the Batavia Fire Department. Alderman Chanzet.
Great, thank you. Pull it up here one second. Okay, there we go. So we, I also have the memo from Laura. This is regarding the chief's retirement. The current structure is a chief and a deputy chief, and staff is making a recommendation that we replace that structure with a chief and two deputy chiefs. The case for it being the additional workload and succession planning. And I can tell, I guess by, by reading it, that staff did, did agonize over this. This is almost a quarter million dollar position, so it is not without cost. I guess I would, I would turn it over to, to Laura or to staff to talk about the, the need for the additional chief, or deputy chief.
Thank you, Alderman Chanzet. You're correct that the retirement of Fire Chief Randy Dikey has prompted us to look at the current organizational structure, and we have made a determination that although, as you note, it is a significant financial impact, I think the, the positive impacts to the organization of the Fire Department are superior to that. And we have seen a prime example of that due to the, the similar structure of a chief and two deputy chief positions in the Police Department, which has both afforded the opportunity for a distribution of similarly complex, but maybe a different in nature of administrative responsibilities. But it also has provided the ability to have greater managerial oversight of the rest of the organization, as well as the opportunity for bench strength, not only in the administrative positions, but also allowing there to be additional opportunities throughout the organization to afford people the ability to prepare for and gain experience, should the, those administrative positions become available in the future. And so we have recognized that not having a second deputy chief position has made it very difficult for the Fire Department in the past to find amongst the current core of individuals under employment, those individuals who are ready to advance because they have not had such opportunities for career development and gaining experience at the administrative level. I run through a number of issues with regard to the workload of a deputy chief in the Fire Department today. I think that those that are most significant are the achievement of ISO 1 certification, which on a three-year rotational basis requires a recertification, and it was a tremendous achievement for our department to be able to be one of only 411 departments in the United States with that, with that certification. And it really does provide a significant discount, primarily to our industrial property owners in the City of Batavia for their insurance costs. Something else unique about the Batavia Fire Department that I think warrants the second position is the administration, administrative duties associated with having a paid-on call force. Not every Fire Department has a paid-on call force, and in fact, you know, it's pretty unique to have a core of 40 people who are on Batavia's paid-on call force. They are, we're kind of admired for the training program that we have developed with those paid-on-call firefighters, and, you know, it's, it's just a nature of the, us only having so many openings on the Batavia Fire Department, that these are individuals who are looking for full-time employment with another fire agency. And when they are able to get those positions, it, it just, we're having to constantly recruit for those paid-on-call positions, and we are having to constantly train new individuals who are coming into the paid-on-call area of the, of the department. And then also, I mentioned, the number of pieces of equipment associated with firefighting. Mayor, being an, an expert and watching this over many years, can attest to the fact that the, the pieces of equipment and the technical complexity of those pieces of equipment is constantly increasing, and the administrative staff are the ones who have that responsibility for maintaining, acquiring the equipment, and then having the schedule for maintenance over that, and that's been a significant increase. So for the reasons of the demand in the workload, and for the ability to be able to have a more robust succession planning within the organization, to be able to have people advance through the Batavia Police Department, we are recommending that we add an additional deputy chief to the Batavia Police Department, Batavia Fire Department. I went the whole way without flipping those, and just in the last minute, yes. So that's our recommendation.
Great, thank you. So, and in, in thinking of this through, I, I guess I would say thank you for, for putting all the information together. I'm surprised we have gotten away with it for so long without having this structure in place. That just definitely speaks to the, the chief's accomplishments. I would say this, we are in a net positive situation because of the amount of money that he brought in for us over the years. So we are still getting a discount even by adding the structure. I would ask if we could encourage him to continue to consult for us, to continue to bring, bring those dollars in, and that will help make the sting of the additional cost. It would be something we, we could tolerate. And Chairman, I guess I would turn it over to you for facilitation, if, if you wouldn't mind.
Okay. All right, thanks, Dan. You got a question, Nick?
Yeah, just, um, you know, one of the concerns we had in, in looking at the different candidates for chief was that some, they didn't have administrative experience. In this model, how are the duties separated? And is one going to be doing administration only, and then he's only getting that experience? Or how is that going to work?
That's a great question. So the way that the, the responsibilities are divided in the Police Department is that one is operations and the other is administrative. It would be different in the, in the Fire Department. One would be services, and the other ones would be operations. Is that correct, Wendy?
Yeah, they would be, for example, it would be training, they're like training and EMS, and then the other side might be operations, or even pub ed. So they would differentiate, when you look at similar structures, it really is all over the board of how they separate those out, but they go more so by their, their core groups, EMS, pub ed, training, and then like, EMS and operations. And then you can split those up.
And each, each of those has administrative duties.
Yeah, for, and for example, even like our POC group, that would probably fall under, you know, one deputy chief to manage that group of people. Similar to like, our police, or one of our deputy chiefs manages the records division, so part of the Police Department, so kind of similar in that fashion.
And the other thing that we would anticipate is, like we have done in the Police Department, that it, as time goes on, we have the ability to, also to have the two deputy chiefs switch, so that both have learned the aspect of both deputy chief positions. And then also, the conversation is kind of ongoing as to where the responsibilities would be split, and it's the intent to sit down with the employees of the department themselves to ask for their advice as to what a logical division of those responsibilities would be.
I think that, and that provides a great structure to be able to switch those two positions, because then you prepare them to be able to do anything and to assume the chief's job at some point. You know, I think that's important.
You know, I think that's important. The things that we've learned going through this, that we apply them to this position or to these positions. I think that that's really important to move forward and to make positive change in the way the structure is set up. Mark?
Yeah, I definitely think this is an important position. And to Dan's point, I can't believe that we didn't have it, and I don't know if we just weren't really thinking about it. Obviously, everybody knows I don't spend money frivolously. I don't think this is frivolous spending, but I also think that it's interesting seeing the numbers broken out. If something doesn't scream pension reform, it's seeing a line item for one individual that screams for pension reform. And that's no disrespect to our first responders. That's an unbelievable amount of money. And I know it's because it's, there's makeup and all this stuff that's in it. It's not, I know it's just not for that one person, but it's one of those things, I hope our state legislatures are listening. I know they're not, but.
That's a yearly contribution that approaches half of the salary.
Exactly.
That just, it's scary to see it on paper.
Forty-nine percent.
And we're still not fully caught up.
Does anybody online have any comments? Is there anybody else? Again. See no hands? Now, remember, I said this the last time we added another position. When we get around to the budget, we can't argue about the fact that we're spending too much money on it after we add a position halfway through the year. So remember that.
It also bears mentioning that following the approval of adding this position, there will be a budget amendment for 2022.
And if we're okay with doing the position, we have to be okay with funding it, so, just a reminder.
I like the idea with the two, when they rotate amongst each other. I mean, they do the same thing with multiple different types of professions. They do it with judges, I mean, they do it with all different kinds. You get the experience of that, where you are, you're adaptable to what comes up.
And you never know when one of those is going to lead to go somewhere else to be a chief or going to retire, whatever. The more planning we can do within the structure of the organization, the better off that organization is. I think it's really important that we do this. I mean, I know it's not small change to do it, it's a giant bill, but it's something that I think benefits the entire organization. Do you have anything else, Dan? Would you care to make a motion?
I would make a motion that we send the council a recommendation to add a second deputy chief.
Second.
Motion of the second, any additional discussion? Please call roll.
Chantet?
Aye.
Soffa?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Yor?
Aye.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rizado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Motion carried, twelve to zero.
Thank you.
Okay, up next is item number eleven, Resolution twenty-two fifty-four R, approving lease agreement with New Singular Wireless PCS LLC for the space on the water tower located at thirteen ninety-two West Main Street for the installation of antenna facilities. Alderman Serone?
Yes, there's two of these. Well, the first one with, with New Singular Wireless, Gary came to us a couple of weeks ago, so I'm just going to turn it over to him to kind of bring an update on to what the lease agreement ended up being.
Thank you, Alderman. Yeah, we actually have talked about this several times now at the council and committee meetings. I did notice in my memo, I forgot a key word, the second-to-last bullet point where I talk about rent. It should say monthly rent. That's a big difference, obviously. So it is monthly rent of thirty-six hundred dollars for the first year, and then three percent annual increases. So every year, the monthly rent amount will increase by three percent. One other item that came up from the time we posted to the COW folder and to today was we needed to add another recital in the top of the lease agreement, which basically states fact that in the state of Illinois, New Singular Wireless PCS LLC is also referred to as AT&amp;T Mobility PCS. So it's just a statement of fact as to how the companies are incorporated in the state of Illinois. I'll have that in the final version that comes to city council, but that's the only change to the lease since it was presented in this package. I'll turn it over in case anyone has any questions.
I'll start with one question. This is basically agreed upon verbally, correct? Just our approval, or does this?
Yeah, our city attorney, Kevin Drendel, has reviewed it, and this follows the same form, form and format and terms and conditions as all of our other lease agreements. There's nothing in this lease agreement that's, that is out of the ordinary from our other ones.
And New Singular is good with this?
Yes, I'm sorry, yeah, I didn't answer your question. Yes, they're also good with this, that's correct.
Did anybody have any questions, concerns? Anyone online?
And this will be our first antenna that's below the tank.
Yeah, and there is, yes, and this, there is the artist renderings in here. And those were one of the first steps that we brought to city council, was to see if you guys were okay with that.
Just wanted to remind everybody that's what we're approving, so.
It's like a little bracelet.
Mm-hmm. Thirty-six hundred dollar a month bracelet.
It's a nice one.
In about five years, Gary, I want to have a list of how much money we've made off of the water towers with leases from these.
Yeah, I can do that anytime.
Because it's just amazing. I mean, nobody else was here, but when we first, when we built these water towers, we argued over how we were going to spend, I think it was six or eight thousand dollars per water tower for the extra heavy-duty railings on the top of it so we could add a couple antennas someday. And I think in like six months of leasing these, we paid for both sets of railings. So it, to me, is just amazing how much money we've made off of those.
Yeah, this is a no-brainer. Anyone online have any questions, comments? With that, I will make a motion to send the council with a positive recommendation, Resolution twenty-one dash zero-five-four R, approving lease agreement with New Singular Wireless PCS LLC for space in the water tower located at thirteen ninety-two West Main Street for installation of antenna facilities.
I'll second it, but for twenty-two fifty-four R.
What did I say?
Twenty-one, no big deal, just getting it.
Oh, that's what it is on the paper. Is it twenty-two?
Oh, it is, there's another error in my memo, I apologize. Correct in the agenda.
Everybody has to stop cutting and pasting. That'll be our new rule for, for next year's budget, that has to be one of the things, line item in the budget.
I actually drafted it, because then I gave it to Karen for the agenda, so the agenda's correct.
Yeah, well, yeah, the agenda's correct, and it's only in the memo that it's wrong.
I'll second either way.
As long as, as long as it's correct on Monday night, we're okay.
Roll call, please.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rizado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Soffa?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Yor?
Aye.
Motion carried, twelve to zero.
Thank you. Up next then is item number twelve, which is Resolution twenty-two fifty-five R, approving equipment shelter lease agreement with New Singular Wireless PCS LLC for shelter located at thirteen ninety-two West Main Street. Alderman Serone?
Gary, I'll turn this back over to you, same, same formula.
Thank you. This is an equipment shelter that the city came into possession of back in 2015 as part of an agreement between us and two cellular companies. And one of the cellular companies had abandoned this shelter, and we obtained ownership of it for the sum of zero dollars. So since then, it really doesn't have any practical use for the city, but we've always thought that one day another carrier may want to come in and use this shelter. So again, we paid nothing for it. We did have an architect give us a rough estimate of what it would cost today to construct it. And as such, we have come up with this value. New Singular Wireless has agreed to pay the city fifty-five thousand dollars in a lump sum upfront payment to lease the space. And they've also agreed to the fact that throughout the term of their lease, if the roof needs done, or the door needs done, or the HVAC needs done, they'll be responsible for all the maintenance. So we're basically going to get a payment and turn the building over to them. We will retain ownership, and so if they ever leave it one day, the building will still remain us. We are recommending, still remain ours. We are recommending the Resolution twenty-two zero fifty-five. I'm having trouble with my years.
With that, I do have a question. The prior owner who vacated it, did they actually sign ownership back over to us? Or is this a finder's, keeper's, loser's, weeper's?
No, there was actually a tri-party agreement. So there was a legal agreement which specified that ownership would be transferred to the city.
And that is basically the same agreement that's moving forward with this?
Well, that agreement was codified in 2015 and finalized. We then own it, now we're having a new agreement with a new company.
But same type of?
Same, well, similar.
If they leave, if they vacate it, it's still going to, we retain it?
Yeah, yeah, oh, I'm sorry, I see what you're asking, yes. If they vacate it in the future, we're, we're making it clear, we're not relinquishing ownership. But it'll still be, it'll still be ours, yes.
Okay.
It's a brick structure. I mean, the masonry part of the structure will last a hundred years. It may need a new roof eventually, but again, during the term of their lease, they'd be required to do that.
Great, another no-brainer. Does anyone else have any comments, questions? Anyone online?
With that, I will make a motion to send the city council with a positive recommendation, Resolution twenty-two dash zero-five-five R, approving equipment shelter lease agreement with New Singular Wireless PCS for shelter located at thirteen ninety-two West Main Street.
Second.
Roll call, please.
Serone?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rizado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Soffa?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Yor?
Aye.
Motion carried, twelve to zero.
Okay, thank you. Now for tonight's marquee event, item thirteen, Discussion on Climate Action Plan. Alderman Beck?
Okay, we're ready to do more, I have to, you stopped sharing, I have to start sharing.
I stopped sharing, so if you click toward the bottom of the screen on Zoom, there you go, that green button, and then PowerPoint.
Okay, everybody can see that?
Yes.
Gary was here.
You, if you would like, Abby, you can change how the names look on the side to just the one speaker, make them go away however you want so it doesn't overlap your slide.
Perfect, thank you.
You're welcome.
Okay, hi. So if you'll recall, last September, we passed a resolution endorsing the Climate Action Plan for the Chicago region. And in doing so, we pledged to take strategic actions to achieve the goals that are listed within that plan and help our region achieve a more resilient, equitable, and healthy future. But we still have to have the conversation about what that means for Batavia and what strategic actions we're willing to take and how we're going to be an active participant in this plan. So what I thought I'd do is give a quick overview, because September was a while ago. So for those of you that may have forgotten what the plan entailed, I'll go over the goals of the plan, how to use it, and then propose a path forward for Batavia. So this plan was developed over sixteen months by two hundred and seventy different people from a hundred and seventy-five organizations, including fifty-three municipalities and counties. It augments the Greenest Region Compact that we passed in 2018. It takes what that plan was, was a great, you know, roadmap for general sustainability. It pulled out all of the climate mitigation and climate change adaptation features and built upon that to create a plan specific to addressing climate change. And it's an effort to link local municipal efforts to the global and regional strategies that are out there because we play a really unique role in combating climate change and adapting to climate change. We have a lot of local control and leverage points that we should take advantage of and to be part of that bigger solution and that broader work. For those of you that aren't familiar with the terms, mitigation is an effort to reduce emissions, to avoid the worst of climate change or avoid the unmanageable. Adaptation is making the changes necessary to make life feasible in a warming planet, so to kind of manage the unavoidable. At this stage in the game, regardless how quickly we turn the wheel, we're going to hit a little bit of the iceberg. We're already encountering certain negative impacts of climate change. We can expect to encounter more along the way until we hit the climate stabilization goals. So adaptation is all about building the resilience so that we maintain a high quality of life here in the city moving forward. So this whole plan starts back in 2015 when CMAP conducted a greenhouse gas inventory for the whole Chicagoland region. As you can see in the pie chart where the sectors are that they've measured where all of our emissions come from. So energy, stationary energy takes the lion's share, so in blue is the electricity, green is natural gas. Transportation accounts for about thirty percent of our regional emissions, and waste is about three. The bar graph on the side is, breaks that down a little bit more specifically. So residential buildings versus partial buildings, on-road transportation versus railways. So when it came time to set projections and goals and targets for this plan and where we need to be, the authors sat down with Argonne National Laboratory, University of Illinois, and NOAA to, to look at where we were as a region and chart a path forward. They set targets that were both realistic and aligned with the Paris Agreement's goal of keeping global warming to under two degrees Celsius. So the scenarios that you see on this graph are based on that 2015 greenhouse gas emissions. And so a scenario one is based on the current, the rates in 2015 staying equal per capita rates, but with population growth, you see that scenario one, kind of the business as usual continuing to increase. Scenario two assumes that we see the same rate of decrease in our per capita emissions that we saw from 2010 to 2015. So you can see that first five years, we were cutting our emissions per capita, which is great. And with population growth, just maintaining at that reduction or at that point, we still don't get down to that climate stabilization. Scenario three actually doubles the rate of reduction every five years from those first five years. So that's a pretty, that's a pretty dramatic reduction in per capita emissions, but you can see it still doesn't get us down to that climate stabilization goal where we stay underneath that two degrees Celsius threshold that we're going for. So the Paris Accord also urges action toward net-zero emissions or carbon neutrality. Carbon neutral means that an overall greenhouse gas emissions attributed to any one place is, are minimized, and any excess emissions are offset by carbon sequestration or mitigation efforts elsewhere. So this plan, the goals for mitigation is to hit net-zero greenhouse gas emissions in the region with targets over the next ten, the next three decades with the goal of eighty percent, reduce greenhouse gas emissions by eighty percent from our 2005 levels by 2050. And how do we do that? This graph here takes those sectors that we saw in the pie chart and breaks them down. So the CMAP team employed the Climate Action for Urban Sustainability, or CURB, tool, which was developed by the World Bank to explore how discrete emission strategies could be combined to reach our overall target. So the CURB tool allows users to establish mitigation goals for each of those sectors that I described previously, the stationary electricity, transportation, and waste, and then define actions to actually achieve those goals. And so the encouraging part is that using aggressive but realistic assumptions about how well all of us municipalities actually go and implement and adopt these policies, that with, with the strategies that they've outlined, we're able to hit that eighty percent target by 2050. And what else is really interesting about this chart is that green bar at the bottom where it says needed innovation. So we can hit eighty percent reduction from our 2005 emissions level by 2050 using existing technologies, using the tools we already have in our toolkit. It would take needed investment and innovation to get to that last twenty, but the excuse of the technology isn't there yet, we don't have the tools, that won't exist for a long time. We've got a lot of years of work ahead of us with what we have at our disposal now. So that was the mitigation side of the plan. The other half of the plan deals with adaptation. And so as I mentioned, we're already experiencing a lot of the negative impacts of climate change, and those are expected to continue into the future until we can get to that climate stabilization goal. So this plan has a large focus So this plan has a large focus on building resilience so that we're prepared, so that we're protecting our residents' quality of life and the value of their property and their assets. And I really loved this visualization from the, from the plan about what that means, like how to be, how to build resilience. So in the less resilient scenario, where you've got the business as usual, and then, and then a hazard, some catastrophe happens, and, you know, functional capacity dips below that tipping point, and the recovery and response is slow, and there's a permanent loss in, in quality of life moving forward. But what this plan lays out are ways to invest in our operations, in the way we function, in the way our, our community works, so that if a hazard comes in, our response and our recovery don't dip below that tipping point. We're able to recover the same quality of life we had before the event took place. So within this plan, the, the authors used the U.S. Climate Resilience Toolkit to outline a process for communities to understand what their exposure is to such hazards, how vulnerable they are, and lay out some options so that they can make plans, like, and have conversations like we're doing now, to be prepared for the future. Every community is coming at this from a different place. We're all prepared in different ways. We have unique landscapes and, and, and systems that make us all, all little snowflakes when it comes to how we're going to be able to react to any climate events that might come our way. So for adaptation, the overall goal is persistent, equitable climate adaptation across the whole, across the whole region by 2050, hoping for cohesive, resilient communities. So I've mentioned these a few times, but here they are laid out. There's mitigation objectives laid out in this plan, there's adaptation objectives laid out. So on the mitigation side, I'm not going to read them, I know that you can read them. The five adaptation objectives are, they were actually synthesized from stakeholder feedback from another group of municipal representatives from across the region, who came together and talked about what they were already experiencing in their communities, where they felt their vulnerable spots were, and workshop different ways to move forward. And that kind of drove these four broad objectives, and then the strategies that go within them. So within each of these objectives, on the mitigation side, there are 40 different strategies for how to achieve each of these objectives. On the adaptation side, there are 52, I think I've got those right, 52 adaptation objectives, so a total of 92 suggestions for each municipality to take and to workshop and to figure out how best to prepare the community. And each of those strategies is organized by what our role is in the strategy. So in some cases, it's just to lead. It's just to lead by example with our own operations and our decisions. Other items are things that we can encourage others to take part in, and encourage other, our, our residents to make certain behavior changes. And then, of course, there are policies that we can enact, and there are policies that we can support other jurisdictions enacting. And much like the Greenest Region Compact, if you remember back to 2018, it's all organized in a fabulous spreadsheet, and I love a fabulous spreadsheet. So all 92 objectives are, are listed. They are listed with what our municipal role is, if it's to lead, enact, or to encourage. It lists the solution status, if it's a proven, if it's a proven method, if it's aspirational or if it's evolving, how much it's going to cost, what its greenhouse gas potential, reduction potential is, how much effort is required. There's all sorts of resources and partners, and then the sheet continues with other ways to make this as easy as possible on paper, to at least get started in adopting and putting some of these into play. So I will pause there for a second before I ask about my proposal for a way to move forward. So now, with a little refresher on what the plan is and what it asks of municipalities to do, are we still on board with charting a plan forward for how we're going to become an active participant in the Climate Action Plan?
I certainly don't have any problem with the plan. I think it's a good idea. As you know, I'm in CMAP, and so I get to hear things that are buzzing around in there. Couple of things that are now buzzing around is, is that through whatever, not our plan, but all the plans, some have got...
Mayor, could you get the mic a little closer?
Somehow, we've got to figure out a replacement for the gas tax. The motor fuel tax, right now, the electric vehicle doesn't have a tax on it. And so, you know, that, that, I understand it's been asked of the legislature and the governor about it, and nobody wants to talk about it until after the election. But that one's out there. The other one that's kind of raising its head, and I don't know where that's going, is on solar panels, there's been a lot of opportunists have jumped into the business of trying to sell solar panels. And if you go out and try to price a solar panel situation for your house, I guess you can get all kinds of bids. And then you, you're, you know, who do you ask? How do we know what's going on? So there's some kind of loose ends on some of this stuff that's now kind of raising its head, and those are the, I'm not opposing, I'm just saying, these are the new issues that are kind of popping up.
Yeah, absolutely. All right, well, if we're good moving forward, there is a quote in the introduction of this plan from Geneva's Mayor Burns, who's the chair of the Environmental Committee for, for the Metropolitan Mayor's Caucus, and I really loved what he wrote here. He said that, "We acknowledge that a transition of this magnitude will yield disruptions of existing power structures, yet in due course, produce a more balanced and redeemable power dynamic that strengthens all people, all places, and all communities. We pursue the inaugural Climate Action Plan for the Chicago region with full knowledge that our work will be years in the making, and our success may not be achieved in our lifetimes. Regardless, we must begin, and begin now." And so I recognize that we can't do everything, every 90, every one of the 92 right now. And I'm also recognizing that you probably don't want to talk about all 92 tonight, right? So what I wanted to propose is, similar to what we did with the Streetscapes Plan and the Downtown Development Plan, is that we formed a small subcommittee that could go through and hash out and go line by line on all the things that are available to the city of Batavia that we can start working on now. I've been in contact with the Batavia Environmental Commission, and their chair, Andrew Greenhagen, has agreed to co-chair that. I thought that was important, with so many of the items being that we need to encourage our community to do certain things, having the advisors, the environmental advisors to us that can help lend their hands and lend their expertise might be a good, a good asset to have in that conversation. I already have a list from Laura about what staff has kind of checked off in the boxes that we can go ahead and check going forward as we start, but am open to suggestions and comments and feedback and questions, and whatever you have.
I'll join the committee.
First thing I want to say is, can you send this PowerPoint to us so that we have all the stuff, so we can see all the spreadsheet stuff?
I'll send you the spreadsheet, the spreadsheet's open.
Okay, just so that way, you know, it's not something that we're going to be able to read on the phone or on a tablet or something, but be able to sit down and digest at some point. And then, I guess, my two comments would be, we have a new communications director, and we have VATB that I think you should utilize, you know, when you get to the point where you need to get this out to the public, the things that the public needs to be aware of and needs to be part of, that we really use that to our advantage, to try to get this out there. Because I think you definitely have to, we have to try to every avenue we can.
Absolutely. Anything else?
Did you want to say something, Mark, or are you just moving?
I always talk, so no, I'm, I'm in favor of it, so I'm looking forward to starting to move forward. And, you know, again, we can't do everything, and we have to pick what's, you know, logical that is practical to start with, and then we start to build momentum over time. So it's, these are ambitious goals, and, but you don't reach ambitious goals if you don't start, so.
And I think too, once we identify what things you, you know, what comes out of the, the smaller committee, I think it's also important that we try to include other entities in town, whether it be the school district, the park district, you know, even the library, to be able to utilize any way we can to get the rest of the community involved in it. It can't just be, you know, 14 of us here, 25 people within the city. It's got to be the whole community to make it work.
And Alderman Vogelsinger has her hand up.
Thank you, I did. Yes, I am a huge fan of following through on this and looking at what, critically thinking about what we are already doing and putting into action whatever we can, getting community on board. I'd love to help with this however I can. I'm super excited about this. So thank you for bringing this to us. Alderman Beck.
Okay, thank you.
Laura?
Yes.
We had a question from the chat as well, just a, not really a question, but a statement. "I am a fan of taxing vehicles based on mileage and weight, since heavier vehicles cause more significant road damage. That being said, an electric vehicle not being affected by a gas tax serves as a natural subsidy towards EVs right now, and thus not entirely a problem while they remain a small portion of the total vehicle weight." And that was from Dustin Piper.
And, and I'll just pipe in too on this, when we're talking about that. I had a discussion a week ago with somebody about this, and the state does tax electric vehicles an additional $100 per year in lieu of payment for motor fuel taxes. Don't know where that money goes exactly. It says, it says in here that $1 of the additional fees shall be deposited in the Secretary of State Special Services Fund, and the remainder in additional fees goes into the road fund. And that's from January of 2020.
So when we're...
Part of the Illinois Vehicle Code.
...out here, where does that, who's paying that money? How's that getting charged?
Well, that money gets paid to the city.
I know that, but I mean, how is the state getting that money for the roads fund? That's what...
They do it when they, when you register the vehicle. I'm on the Secretary of State website. So when you register the vehicle, you pay, you pay, it says right here, the first time issuance is $406 for a car, 155 title fee and 251 registration fee. I guess I'd have to look up what the other ones are for a regular vehicle, but it says in here that according to the state code, that they charge an additional $100 per year for an electric vehicle. Now, I don't know if that's in any way, shape, or form close to what an average vehicle buying fuel would pay into the, you know, by tax would pay into the...
There are people looking at that right now.
MFT, I, I'm sure, I'm sure they are, and again, you're right, that there will be no decision until after the election.
Alderman Vogelsinger has her hand up.
Sarah, go ahead.
Alan, you covered what I was going to say. We have an electric vehicle, and my husband's annual registration, I think, is about triple, I don't know, it's at least double what I pay for my normal motor, gas-powered vehicle. So they pay a significant amount extra every year with the annual registration. Can someone offer that in?
And I wouldn't doubt that that's going to change too. Whatever they figure out, the averages, I'm sure that that's what they're going to try and hit up everybody with the electric car for. Anybody else have any other questions or comments? And then, when you get the committee forum, just let us know, or let everybody know who's on it and what's going on, and just keep moving. Thank you. And then we'll move on to item number 14, which is project status. Laura?
Sure, just a few things to update you on. We are excited to announce that the staff has conducted the first meeting of the Workplace Diversity Equity and Inclusion Committee last Wednesday, May 4th. We have volunteers from every department within the city who are serving on that committee. And very timely, we were contacted by the Metropolitan Mayor's Council's Diversity Task Force and invited to participate in a meeting today, where they were discussing an upcoming pilot project to assist municipalities in implementing their DEI programs and to assist you with initiatives. And so we hope that Batavia will be able to avail ourselves of some of the resources that would be available to us under that program. And they've also invited us to become regular members of that committee, which meets quarterly, and I'm sure there'll be a lot of things that we can learn from the other municipalities who are also participating on that community, committee. Also, an update on the Active Transportation Plan. The Active Transportation Alliance has been meeting with additional constituent groups to try to, you know, cast his wide a net to receive community input on the improvements that would be necessary to make Batavia a more walkable and more bikeable community for all. They've reached out to Fox Valley Special Recreation Association, the Batavia School District, Batavia Apartments and Mercy Housing, and the Batavia Bicycle Commission. They also will be attending a senior luncheon at the Park District on May 18th to hold a brief focused discussion with the seniors who are attending that meeting as well. In Public Works, they're continuing on the Mahoney Creek Tributary Detention Basin Project. Despite the heavy rainfalls, the construction crews have continued to make progress, and they're scheduled to have the West Side Basin substantially completed in the next two to three weeks. And engineers are continuing to evaluate options for the Carriage Crest Drainage Project. Staff is in conversation with the Park District right now regarding potential expansion of the existing detention basin. And annual resurfacing and sidewalk project is proceeding on schedule, with the sidewalk repairs and construction scheduled for late spring, followed by roadway resurfacing in the July-August timeframe. If folks would like to know if their streets and sidewalks are part of that program, on the city's homepage, you scroll down to the bottom, there's a really valuable link there called City Maps. And there are all kinds of city maps. You can learn what ward your, your house is located in. You can learn about ongoing development projects that are happening within the city. But if you click on the Capital Projects tab, you can see if your street or your sidewalk in front of your house is one of those which is on the list. And then, in the Police Department, we're happy to report that they collected in excess of 35 pounds of unwanted prescription medication and other related materials for disposal during their participation in the recent take, take-back sponsored program, which is sponsored by the U.S. Drug Enforcement Administration, but it wasn't just a one-time thing. If you can visit the Police Department anytime, and there's a box located there, and if you want to just, you know, dump your medications just into any old, like, baggie or whatever to bring in, you can dispose of your medication safely there. That achieves two things. Then these things don't end up in the wastewater system, which is very important. And then another aspect of it is just to take those drugs out of circulation so that they don't, you know, become potentially used by those who are addicted or illegally traded. So a drug take-back program is very beneficial, and we're on it 365 days a year. Officer Goshi, one of our department bicycle patrol officers, participated in the Bike to School Day last week at HC Storm School. Sergeant Michelle Langston recently completed the two-week police supervision course at Northwestern University Center for Public Safety. And Sergeant Matt White recently completed the 10-week School for Police Staff and Command at Northwestern University Center for Public Safety. And that's my update for this week.
Does anybody have any questions for Laura?
Maybe a quick update on the Mahoney Creek situation, the retention basin over on Kirk Road, and then also whatever happened with the issue we had with Fermilab in terms of the east side of Kirk Road and the contract language that was discussed.
No, I don't have an update on that. I've reached out to Fermi, and I'm waiting to hear back, but, you know, I do know that within, like I said, with that contractor, when they're done on the west side, it really would be great if they could just move right over to the east side of the road and, and do that project as well. So just waiting to hear back from them.
Okay. Okay, any other questions?
I have one. Anthony, thank you for inviting us to the Bike, the Bike Event next Friday. Is anybody else going on that?
I believe, I believe Sarah is also going to be, yep. Anthony, anybody else? Me. Hopefully.
It's Sarah, Leah Lehman, yourself, and Abby. So we have four participants from the city of Batavia.
There might be some more with some kids in tow.
Philippines.
Okay. Anybody else have any others for tonight?
Anybody else have any others for tonight? If not, then I need a motion to go into executive session for personnel and litigation.
So moved, second.
Motion by Yor, second by Saron, roll call, please.
Yor?
Aye.
Saron?
Aye.
Vogelsinger?
Aye.
Miller?
Aye.
Rosado?
Aye.
Beck?
Aye.
Connolly?
Aye.
Chantet?
Aye.
Soffa?
Aye.
Wolf?
Aye.
Baron?
Aye.
Ayazi?
Aye.
Motion carried, twelve to zero.
Okay, we'll see you in executive session.
Thank you, and I don't expect any...